Good slightly afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the July 21st special meeting of the town Florence Town Council. With that, item number one is our roll call, please.
Here. Vice Mayor Kathy Adam.
Here.
Councilmember Nicole Buculato.
Here.
Councilmember Jose Maldonado.
Here.
Councilmember Tony Bassina. Councilmember Sherry Bedford.
Here.
Councilmember Arthur Neal.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you very much. And as a reminder to us that are on Zoom, please keep your cameras on so we can maintain our quorum. Item number three is our moment of silence, and then item four pledge allegiance. So please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. And now please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the
To the flag.
The United States of America. And to the Republic. For which it stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you very much. There you are, Councilmember Bedford. Thank you. So, all right, item number five is our call to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or act any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. So I see we do have a couple folks online, and is there anyone in house in the chambers that would like to speak at this time?
There's no one requesting to speak.
Okay, anyone online requesting to speak?
There is no one requesting to speak.
Okay, I'm not going to close the call to the public. At this time, item number six, new business, number six A, accept the warrant register of the month of June 2025 in the amount of $7,516,765.64. Does any council member have any questions for Mr. Dudding? Doesn't appear that way. I will accept a motion to approve.
I make emotionally approve the warrant register as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Not seeing none. All in favor? Hi. All opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you so much. At this time, item number seven, I'll, I'll look for a motion to adjourn to the Board of Adjustments.
I make a motion that we adjourn to the Board of Adjustments. Second.
Okay, we have a second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
I.
I.
All opposed? Okay, at this time, we are in the Board of Adjustment for the Town of Florence. Item seven A, this is a public hearing and possible action for a variance for relief from the requirement of a main building being constructed before placing an accessory building at 360 North Park Street, Florence, Arizona 85132. Ms. Benitez.
So of the Board of Adjustment today. Today, we are here to discuss a variance for 360 North Park. The applicant is looking to get relief from the accessory building code in our Chapter 150 Development Code. This was, the impetus of this was a code enforcement as two accessory conics boxes were placed on the land without a main building. Within the accessory building code, you cannot have accessory buildings without main one. And do that coenforcement. The applicant came to staff and we advised him that if he wanted to try to get some relief from the code that he could apply for this variance. Now, in the report, staff does understand that this item is self-imposed and there's no special circumstances on the land. So that's why, for the most part, we, that's why we deny the or recommend denial. However, the applicant has done their, their work and they've put in a building permit. They've put in for design review for a main building. And they do have site plans in process. They're about a quarter of the way through. They're going to their technical advisory committee meeting on this Wednesday for the design review of this building. So they are working through the process and just want relief through this variance for those accessory buildings.
If I could just give you a brief introduction before Mahdi proceeds. Is that okay?
Please.
Okay, so as the Board of Adjustment, you are not acting as a council. You're acting as a quasi judicial entity. Variances in Arizona have certain tests and each municipality has its own set of provisions. For your provisions, what Mahdi was referring to is in your town code, there are certain elements that should be met. When you open the public hearing, since I represent this board, I'm not representing the applicant. So I'm not going to go through all of their questions. However, I may ask to, for them to clarify and see if they've covered a certain element that they're supposed to address. As Mahdi indicated, and I think her report reflects what our criteria are in the, in the town code. But as she said, essentially, the applicant is required to show evidence that there are special circumstances or conditions applying to the land. Additionally, those special circumstances should not be caused by the applicant. That's when we say if they, if it's self-imposed, if they've created the condition that they're asking a deviation for, then it's not justified as a variance, meeting the variance requirement in Arizona under Arizona Land Use Law. They are also required to adjust the concept or not adjust, but meet the standard of evidence showing that it's necessary to grant the variance to preserve the rights of the use of their land. Okay, so this is typically considered an area where it's something to do with the topography or the shape of the parcel that may prevent a person from complying strictly with the town's regulations. And then if they are not met, that's when the board can consider a variance. But it is your discretion to decide if these elements are met or not, based on the evidence of the applicant, not the evidence of me presenting my opinions or the staff or the town presenting their opinions. It's based on the hearing evidence that the applicant presents. So that's what you need to focus your decision on and decide, okay, has the applicant met these conditions with what they are saying as testimony in the record? The other thing that they should address is whether or not if this variance is granted, will it affect detrimentally the neighborhood or the area or the properties around it? One item to remember is if you were going to grant a variance, the board is entitled to impose conditions on the variance such as a time limitation, or perhaps it's permissible. The variance is only permissible for 30 days or 180 days, and then it automatically expires. So those are the general parameters. And the reason I'm emphasizing this is once we create the record, the applicant, their remedy, if they do not like the Board of Adjustment decision, their remedy is to appeal to Superior Court. And then what we do is we record, this recording is typed up in a transcript along with the staff report. All that goes together as a packet or record to the Superior Court. And then if a Superior Court is, the judge is reviewing what is decided here, they're limited to what is in the record today to decide whether or not you have made an appropriate decision under the law. So those are the parameters to follow once we open the public hearing.
All right, very good. Thank you so much for that, Cliff. I appreciate that explanation to, to that. So at this time, does the is the applicant there? Does the applicant wish to speak before the, the public hearing, or am I out of sequence?
Hi, thank you for having us down today. Thank you for doing this, obviously during your, your time off time. So we certainly appreciate this. It is a lot of this stuff we didn't know about. So we were presented with a sheet today describing the, the process and the things that we needed to fulfill. It is true, I don't know if you guys have the same document in front of you. Okay, awesome. So findings D, variance provision. So obviously, item one, I completely agree, we do fail that. Item two, I completely agree, we do fail that. Item three, we do fail that. The, the authorizing of a variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of substantial property rights. And then the number five, in general, how we got here, we are, we are a game store, but we are more than that. I have had the opportunity to watch some of the other council meetings. And you, you have a very strong sense and desire to have educational facilities brought into your, into your town, community type stores and things like that. Both my, my wife, she's back here, my wife and I, we started out 35 years ago building children's museums. That was our thing. We did animal rescue. It was very much a life science type industry. We even helped LA County Museum do their children's museum. Our museum is called Castle Earth Children's Museum. And it is very much our nature, even to this day, we are big fans of education. We love supporting STEM and STEAM programs. And that is, so we are more than just a game store that's going in there, although to the credit of game stores, they are, these days, a lot of the gaming industry is highly educational, highly supportive. It teaches math, English, communication between people, kids and things like that. It gives family quality time, safe places to go. Combine that with, we also do science programs. I do little kinds of questions. Kids come in, they treat us like a museum. It's a very different place. We do have like dinosaur bones, fossil casts that kids can ask questions about. We started out 35 years ago. Where when we are doing our children's museum, we started helping a lady named Marion O'Donnell. She was the head casting and resin producer for the La Brea tar pits. And then we were helping her sell her craft, her craft to museums all over the world. To this day, we still do that. And the pieces that I have in the store, you can actually buy, these are pieces I can sell to the public. So, so considering some of the things like a preservation enjoyment, I mean, obviously, we bought the property. The situation was a bit of a panic. So a year and a half ago, my mother had multiple strokes. So we owned a property in Apache Junction. Due to different things, I kept on having to close down the store, change my business hours and a whole bunch of other things just to take care of her. We got to the point where it was going to be pretty much very difficult for us to to build our business back in that location. So we sold the building that we were owner occupied. We bought the property out here next to the Heritage Funeral Home. With the absolute intention of building a building, we had already gone to Absolute Steel, who built a lot of the government metal buildings. They're very helpful. We have an affordable building, 2,000 square feet. It's not a lot of space. There is only benefit to the community with us going in here. If the people that know me, I am mostly just a goof. We're here to have fun. We're here to inspire teachers, to inspire parents, to provide educational items, support schools. That is really what we're here to do. The store itself is very much just a way for us to get revenue in order to do the different programs and events and fundings that we do. So in both cases, yeah, the community, it's impossible to describe the story. Obviously, we have a website, pictures, please go there. I did a blog page for everybody to look at. So please visit that page and I can provide that to you, the link to it if you need it. But it's, it's a peach of a place where fun people. We were happy to be able to do this, but the whole process, you know, we had to move from AJ, we bought the land here. I, you know, the land, the land, we saw it as an opportunity. He let's throw a couple of storage in there. I have 400 square feet in storage at a, at a private location too. So we're sitting on about 1,000 square feet and storage was absolutely required. But yeah, this is self-inflicted. So, I mean, I hate to say it, but as far as, you know, you know, us being able to use the property, we, gosh, we hope we let us build, do, build, do the build and do the property. So item four and item five, I strongly feel that we meet both those criteria. So hopefully that'll be part of your consideration.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Aldoff. Is there, I will now, at this time, sir, thank you so much. We, we may have other questions for you, but at this time, I will now open the public hearing for this, I'm sorry, I've got this wrong. The public hearing, possible action for the relief requirement of Main Street building constructed as an accessory building at 360 North Park Street. At this time, is there anyone in the council chambers or online that would like to speak to this item?
Mayor, you do have Bonnie Berryola's hand up.
Okay, very good. Good afternoon, Ms. Berryola. Are you there, Bonnie? Bonnie, you're muted.
Too many buttons to push.
Good afternoon, ma'am.
Bonnie Berryola, the clerk has my address. The gentleman just tap danced around the issue, but I'm wondering if this is even, a store is even allowed in this zoning district. And, and also, are these, there was no photo of the, what is existing of the property. If it's storage in or studies even meet the criteria for an accessory building. And, and these are just three of the questions that, that I thought I would ask. And ordinarily, if, if they're for construction, that should be included in the permit for the building permit. But these are just three questions that I had. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Berryola. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
No.
Okay, seeing none, I'm now going to close the public hearing. And then I will open up the floor to counsel for comments or questions, and I'd like to go first. So first of all, Mr. Aldoff, thank you very much to you and your wife for choosing Florence to come and to possibly relocate your business. Though that is something that we very much in support of you on that. So there's a number of things at play here. So obviously, and you admit to, and it is, and the code is extremely clear about the structures. Now, I will, I will say, and this is for staff, is there a possible question? So I realize that this came from planning and zoning as a denial as well. Staff has denied it as well, but since then, it appears that a, an application has been filed for permit and first review. Am I correct with that? And Marcella or AJ, I don't know who's in there. Can you please answer that question?
So this item has not gone to the Planning and Zoning Commission, not yet. So there is no denial from the commission. They, right now, they have submitted for a building permit and then they submitted for a design review permit. They will go to the Technical Advisory Committee for their review there on Wednesday. And then we'll go through either administrative or planning and zoning, depending on the code. I would like to clarify one of Bonnie Berryola's questions. This land is within a zoning that has four different types of zonings. Single-family residential, neighborhood multifamily residential, neighborhood office, and manufactured home subdivision. So all of these zonings apply to that area. The zoning neighborhood office does allow for retail under 10,000 square feet per our land use code, the chart. So this use as retail game store is something that is allowed per the code. I'm sorry, did I answer all your questions?
So, so, and I apologize for the planning and zoning. I must have been looking at something else because I do, I did see on there that you, that staff had recommended turning this down. So, but, but that was prior to them getting their application filed?
That's the design review application filing?
Any of their, the building permit and then their design review, any of it.
It was hard for staff to recommend approval with three of them being, they don't meet the special conditions, they don't, they, they did cause it themselves. And that we have something in code to prevent these. So it was hard for staff to deny it. But I understand there are, the circumstance itself. So it was difficult for staff to make that recommendation. But we did because it doesn't meet three of those five. But they are going through the process, so it was hard for us to say absolutely not.
Sure, sure. No, I, I understand and I, and I appreciate staff. And you were absolutely right. That was the right call at that time when this went. So there's, there's a couple of things here. So as, as they're moving forward, there's also a common sense part of this is that if we was today to deny this variance and give them two weeks to pull the containers, and then in another two weeks, they get a building permit, and then now it's legal to put those containers back on. So I, I think that everyone in this room and online realizes that I'm generally a common sense kind of guy. And so I guess my, my main question as we're looking at this and, and moving forward with it is, and and possibly, Mr. Aldoff, maybe I can ask you another question. And what I would like to know is a timeline on your project. After, after you get, after you get a permit.
Absolutely. Everybody, all my contractors, they call me all the time, like, what about today? What about today? What about today? I already have a backflow. The guys, we're just waiting for the backflow to come in. You guys probably know, I forget the name Brett and Joe, they're plumbers in the area. They've got the backhoe all ready to go to pull the sewer lines in. If you guys gave me the permit right now, tomorrow we'd be starting and timeframes. Yeah, the sewer lines and water lines, that could be easily done in a day. The concrete would be, within a week would be poured, well, at least for footings, and then they'd be inspected and then the rest of the concrete would go in. 30 days drying time. In that time, I would be almost immediately letting no absolute steel go in and fabricate and paint. And in their case, it is a 45 day process in order for them to do this. I think they have, like, the framework done initially. My contractor will actually pick it up from Phoenix and drive it out and do that part of it. Then all the sightings and painted pieces and stuff like that would be finished within that 45 day period. Hopefully, not a big building. They should have no problem meeting that. And then these guys get all installed, building a metal building. Couldn't be more than 30 days. These guys are experts. They're really good at what they do. And then it's just a matter of, I think they're asking us to pave the driveway, the parking lot. So that's a challenge for us. So we didn't expect to have to do that. Then just doors, electrical and the hooking up the plumbing. So that would be the process. So I would say if I, if we, once we have the go, I would say on the short end, four months, I would ask for six if you guys want to give me sublenience on that. If that's important.
Yeah, I know. And, and, and actually, so when I, on the timeline specifically, because I will tell you that nothing will go according to plan 100% on yours. So let's not, so, so my, my thought process when I asked that was how quick, after you get a permit that you're ready to go, and it sounds like you're ready to go. So that, that, so that, that answers the question there. So, okay, all right, very good. Well, that's all the questions that I have. I will open up to the rest of council. So please, Lisa, if you wouldn't mind calling or Vice Mayor calling if, if somebody else is in, councilmembers that want to speak right now or ask any questions.
So, yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to start out on the same positive note as the mayor. I think that what you would bring to our community would be wonderful and we really appreciate it.
Thank you for that.
I don't understand, how long were those, have those containers been there? Since June, early June is when this was, the appeal was filed.
Oh, correct.
How long have they been on the property?
So, March, April, 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 I believe, yeah.
And so were they there by a container contractor or by the contractor who's supposed to be building your main?
That is absolute storage. So it is a container company. We, okay, actually, good question. So we, we bought the smaller one and the bigger one is a rental. So as soon as the building is built, the bigger one gets unloaded, probably even before we put the doors on. And then the goal was, is to, even though we're going to keep the smaller one, I'm hoping to put a facade already around it. We really wanted to play into the Western town theme. So I was, I was going to put a little Western town around it. So when you see it, you wouldn't even know it's there. So that is the goal. And I actually already have all the plywood and everything. I just stopped doing what I was doing because I didn't want to.
So when did you actually apply for a permit to build the main building?
I actually think I had already applied before I had gotten the notice. And I don't know that for sure. Do you know the date?
So the gentleman applied for the building permit at the end of May. And then he did the design review in June, as, as we realized that would be the next step he'd need to take.
So obviously with your plans, I'm assuming you're working with licensed contractors. Who should understand the town ordinances? And while I am very sympathetic, I don't believe you're far enough along for this body, for me personally, to say, yes, leave those containers there with a specified amount of time because we know you're actually underway. As the mayor said, you have not gotten your permit yet. I understand you have a very optimistic build plan, but I also know build plans don't go smoothly. They, if you think four months, it's going to be eight months. So right now, where I'm coming from is especially in that part of town, we are really unhappy with all the unpermitted work containers that are not in compliance. And we are just not enforcing our code uniformly. And while I appreciate that there are nuances here, I think our planning department made the right decision because it's very clear the criteria you need to meet in order to get this adjustment. And I am not seeing.
If, if I may.
Sir.
As far as like contractors and stuff like that, they don't get brought into the process initially, not with steel buildings. It's really not until you get the permits that you actually get a general contractor. I did move forward and got a general contractor because it was requested for the paperwork. So that person brought, so there was nobody able to advise, advise us on this. I did go through a very lengthy process of Googling and trying to find different things. And everything I read said, so long as I'm doing a building and construction, this is permitted. And that is, you know, part of, you know, the county guidelines and stuff like that too. And the only real confusion for me was, when is it considered building? So when I filed for the permit, in my mind, I am commencing building and it sounds like I needed to break ground. And I feel like I've done did I, me in the sewer and things like that too. So I've actually, what had already moved forward. So I feel like I've met both of those.
That's the judgment, I guess, for the Board of Adjustments to make.
Absolutely.
I guess here, here's my other question. When you are going into a neighborhood, and this is still clearly a neighborhood, yes, it's neighborhood office, so businesses are allowed. But there is a brand new house that was just built right across the street. I know the house next to it had been rehabbed. I know the two empty lots next to that would make fine residential lots. Several of us live there and now I'm hearing steel, steel buildings. And I don't know if you understand, but that Public Works Department, which is right next door, had come to us and proposed to do two more steel buildings down the road on Ruggles. And this council rejected that because we live there. So now I hear steel building. So now I hear steel building and I don't know that that fits our neighborhood. So I'm just going to say that right in the beginning. So, thank you.
Uh, thank you for that. Is there anyone else that has any comments? Uh, member Bucelado.
Thank you again for coming today. Um, I also agree. I, I think that there would be a great need for this in our town. I think it's, I, I've looked at your website, looked at the blog. Um, I actually asked questions, I think back in April or early May about what this was, because I don't live far from there myself.
Remember you driving by, yes.
Yeah, and then, um, no, I, I actually live right there. So I'm one house behind. Um, and then I just see this Emporium sign pop up on day and Conex boxes and it's kind of everything we've been working on, um, to kind of. I don't know, um. I just try to be more observant in our town because we are on a mission right now to, you know, clean things up and make sure that people are in compliance and that's something that's kind of near to me. So, um, I think there's a need. I just don't know if it would be on that lot, um, picturing a paved, um, area for parking, the building itself, um, I, I don't see anything that says how tall it's planning on being.
It's only a one-story, fourteen feet, ten-foot walls.
I don't have any pictures to go off on and I, and I just applied for a permit few months ago. And I mean, the things that you have to supply in order to get the permits, I, I would have been nice for us to be able to see those things today. It's something that we've continually asked for and we, we just don't ever seem to get and.
Well, if anybody had asked, I could have gave you drawings and everything.
Yeah, that's not on you. That's not on you. Um, but, um, I also agree that, um, Public Works was going to have a big steel building in that area. And there's a house right on this side of you. There's a, a brand new home on this side of you. And then there's Public Works on this side. Um, I do think that there is a need for what you guys have. I think it would be great in our town. I just don't think it would be great in a neighborhood.
So my confusion on this is I did go to planning and stuff before we even started this and asked if we are allowed to do a metal building, asked if I could do a retail store. We were told yes. So this isn't, I'm not forcing this on you in any way. I did do my proper investigation to make sure that this was all acceptable and okay. We're not an old town. I mean, they said everything is totally okay. You can do it.
So, excuse me. So if, if, if I can, and I'm so sorry to cut all of you off, but let me, let me just remind the board, uh, as well. Is that the question here is of the variance for relief, uh, from a code. I understand what we're talking about and, and we're going here in our conversations. But the actual question at hand is, uh, is this variance for relief going to be, uh, approved? Or, or not approved? So I am sorry to put that out there. So if there, is there any other board members?
Me like I can't even build now. You guys don't even want to build.
So we, we, we will, we will put this back on a different line here and certain we will have other conversations with you, with our team or planning and, or planning teams. So I am so sorry, but is there any other board members that would like to speak? Okay, not seeing anyone. So.
I did, I'm trying to understand what you're, you're trying to cut it off. Trying to understand what you just said.
Who, me?
Yes, you, the mayor.
No, what, what I said is that we are conversations. So the, the question at hand today is the board of adjustments. Uh, and just of the variance for relief of the requirement of this accessory building. So we, we are not here to discuss what's being built, how it's being built, and any of that's before us right now. So I just wanted to get us back online with this. Um, and I, and I don't have any other information as to the conversations between, uh, the Aldoffs and our planning and zoning and, and building department and where they're at. Yes, I, I do know that there, I'm sure have conversations, but I just want to get this back online here as to what our quest question is today. And Cliff, you may pipe in if you want to, but that's the way I see this where we're at right now.
Also, Mayor, I, I had a comment. I don't know. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir. Yes, member Neil.
I think Nicole still has some questions.
I don't know. Were, were you done, Nicole?
No, I'm okay. I, I was just, what I was kind of getting to is what we see a lot in this, in this town right now and where my frustration lies, isn't necessarily with them. It's just in general. Lot of people do things aren't, aren't, aren't aware to look at ordinances first or to see what may be allowed. And then come, you know, come in and then ask for forgiveness later. But if a bur, a building permit has been applied for, it would be nice to see that information when making a decision like this. Because I would like to know, you know, um, along with some of the first questions that were asked, like, what is the timeline? I mean, we all think sewer takes one day, but I've been renovating my guest house and it's been three weeks now and it was supposed to be a three-day job. So I think that plays into where our, our questions lie. And I'm not saying that he can't build there ever. I'm just, what I'm saying is, is right now. There's Conex boxes and a big sign that says Emporium. But we haven't done the first steps yet. And I know that's where he's at. But at the same time, trying to picture these things without any pictures, without any, um, building plans, without it, it's just kind of hard to side on that side when we're not really provided the information that we need to make an educated decision. That's it.
Thank you. And I certainly don't, and I don't disagree with you. So when I'm saying that, so I, I understand. So, uh, member Ben Sina, you had some questions and then member Neil.
Um, so what's, he still has a process to go through that has to go to planning and zoning with the building, right?
There is still a process. There is still design review. Technical advisory is the next step. I am talking with our director on whether or not it needs to go to planning and zoning per our code. If a building is under, uh, the land is under one acre or it's under ten thousand square feet. It doesn't have to go to Planning and Zoning Commission. It can be done and made a ministratively reviewed. So I'm in discussions with AJ about which path it, it needs to go.
So the question I, I have, because he, he let it out the bag, in there, they're building houses. And if he was building a store that looked similar to a house is one thing, but he's going to put up a, a metal building. Which I know Public Works tried to do before I was even on this council and that got shot down in that area. So my question is, is you're changing the description of what building is going to look like amongst those houses. That's my curiosity. An office complex is not necessarily a metal building.
Mr. Mayor, if I could go back and make a point of order, I, I agree with you. The point of this board of adjustments is very simple, whether or not they met the criteria to get a variance. It has nothing to do with the coming building.
So I, I'm just, well, the remainder of the process, I agree with what the mayor says. But, uh, you know, my question is, is, you know, what's, what's the process going from here? So if, nobody's going to have to remove if we vote no, but then he still has a process to go through. So, okay.
All right, uh, member Neil, please.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Oh, I was more on the, the zoning of that area. And I want the applicant to, to not feel discouraged or get angry. Since we've been begging and screaming for things for our children in this town. Like everyone said, it's sorely needed. I just, I want to stay on track with what we're doing here, but I just want to make sure he knows that everyone on the council said, we have a need for this. We want this. It's, I don't think anyone keeps a track of where planning and zoning has, this building can be, that building can be, except for planning and zoning. So when it comes to us, it's just the thoughts right offhand. And especially it's been in a bad time, where we've had a whole lot of people doing things that aren't going by what the rules and regulations are, which is not his fault whatsoever. But it has to be stopped. And it kind of seems like we're coming down on him with everybody else's things. And I don't believe that's the case. And I, I really don't want him to feel annoyed or angry about this. But this is something that we need to do as a council to make sure and ensure that things are going right. So I want to, I want to tell the dude, it's, it's very needed. We really want to, which we really want it. But there, there's a process we're going to have to go through also.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any other board members wish to speak? Board member Maldonado or board member Bedford?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Matisse has his hand raised, too.
Okay.
No, I have.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I know, I don't think you can see me, but so, you know, back to the point of, you know, the timing. Those kind of questions in the record may relate to, for example, if the variance were approved along a condition might be, uh, applied to the variance if it's approved, if a condition is approved at all. But the, to clarify, um, regardless of the underlying zoning, we're not really here to discuss the zoning case. Um, so I think as was suggested earlier, the focus is kind of the timing and meeting the five elements of the variance test that's in our code. And so the applicant, I'm just gonna, again, this is not my opinion, but I think I heard him say that he does not meet two or three of those conditions and he needs to meet by sufficient evidence all of the conditions. So regardless of what the board may consider on other issues, what we have to consider for this hearing is whether or not the applicant has presented sufficient evidence to meet all of the conditions that are in our town code in order for you, the board, to grant a variance.
Thank you, sir. Member Maldonado.
Um, so as far as the, well, in, in my opinion, like, yes, we do need stuff like this in our town, just like every other, one of the council members did say. But for me, a lot of those things weren't, uh, a lot of those conditions weren't met. So unless we, we, we created a timeline somehow. And within that timeline, it's, uh, I guess the permit isn't issued, then we would go ahead and say by this date, you know, you were to remove this. So uh, I know it, it's, he's not meeting all the conditions, but at least we'll be trying a little bit more lenient towards giving an actual timeline of, hey, this needs to be done by such and such date. And if not, then the, the containers will be removed. That's, that's my two cents.
All right. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to ask questions or speak? All right. At this time, then I would.
I'm sorry, Mayor, one, one more. I'd like to ask, does he have a plan for his containers? Uh, or is this like his final draw? I'm wondering, like, if we don't move the containers and he has to keep going with this process, does he have somewhere to move the containers? Is that his issue?
He has a thread. He has somewhere to move the containers. Um, I, I totally don't. No, um. It's, um, the process of this. Um, if, if I, you said you had read, uh, read the blog. Um, in order for me to move my store, it was, uh, five twenty-six foot trucks with a lift. And it was three twenty-foot trucks with a lift. I am a sixty-year-old man. Some of this stuff weighs hundreds of pounds, including a grand piano, an upright piano. Hundred and twenty-year-old thing that I always use is something that's really cool for kids and family to look at. Um, that sucker weighs about eight hundred pounds. Um, asking me to move this, um, is impossible for me. If I move it, I, I have one move left in me. I either move it from the property or I move it into the building. Um, can I just hook up a truck to this? The answer is no. When I moved everything into these storage units, storage units were in place and these trucks were loaded into them. These are, they were not loaded to be moved. They were loaded, loaded to be storage. There are glass cabinets in there. There are chairs stacked to the, on top of shelving. If I tried to move them just by themselves, I'm going to take tens of thousands of dollars of damage to my equipment. So it's, I can't move them. Also, when I did move them out here the first time, um, we had access to the whole lot. The, uh, heritage funeral home put up a fence now between us. Uh, there is no place for me to pull trucks into. So if I move them, I have one move in me. That's it. I'm not going to fight for this like this. It's wrong to even ask me to do it because I'll only get injured. I'm only going to get injured if I do this. I'm too old to do this. And we're just trying to do something nice and I'm baffled. Thank you for you guys.
Sir, thank, thank, thank you, sir.
Everybody that said nice things up there. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there any, any other members? All right. Not seeing any. I would entertain a motion from any member. See, have any motion?
I'll make a motion to approve around the permit with a, a timeline of six months, um, for completion. On this project.
Councilmember Sina, that's approval of the variance for six months and then to be automatically, uh, expired depending on whether the final construction is complete on the main building. Is that?
Or he's met the requirements. So if he starts the projects and starts the building, does that meet the requirements?
Okay. I, I'd have to defer to Marty on that.
So the building would need to be in place to have the accessory one?
My question is, is, does he have six months to start or is it six months to finish? Once he puts, starts the building, does he have the right to put those on there?
So he would need to have made building. So it's six months to complete.
Okay. We could put him on there or what, when's, what, when's he start his building? Is he allowed to put him on there or let's say?
Yes, when he's starting it, he can have him there because it does have to do with some of the construction.
Okay. So what my, my motion would be to approve with us giving him a six-month timeline to start. We could do three months. Starting the, the construction of the building. That's, that way he meets the requirement, right?
The only reason I'm a little confused is because down the line, this may become an issue and I, I think Modicella just said completion. So, and then is the storage for his construction materials or is the storage for the business? I, I don't know. I mean, I haven't been out there. So Marty, you could have to tell us. That I think the applicant just said both, but, but we, sir, maybe it'd be better if you just go on the record and, and kind of describe for the board what you have out there.
Yeah, in general, uh, there are construction materials. I had mentioned that we wanted to put a facade around the metal building, things like that. So there are a lot of construction materials. There's also, uh, door locks, frames, all kinds of things like that already in those buildings. It is also true that, um, there is a, uh, plethora of cabinetry, seven-foot cabinets, three feet wide, things like that. They're also in there. Yes. So it is both.
Councilmember Ben Sina, do you want to adjust your, your motion? Or leave it as is?
I don't, I'm taking it that once he starts his building, he can have the construction containers on there. So I will give it a motion to approve this request with a six-month timeline to start his building.
Okay, we have a. Sounds good. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion from the board members?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor's.
Vice Chair, Vice Chair.
Vice Chair, I'm sorry. Yes. Uh, I just want to caution where we're going here. The ordinance is very. The ordinance is very explicit on what is allowed for us to approve this appeal. And if the conditions are not met, you do not approve the appeal. Now we're going down a slippery slope, and we are trying to go around the ordinance to be nice, because this is a business that we absolutely do want. So let me caution you, we're six months into this, and as construction goes, it doesn't go well. So now after six months, are we gonna ask this gentleman to move the containers out? Do we get it? We don't have a process to appeal the appeal. What are the conditions exactly? And I would love for this to be up and running in six months. I would bet you lunch, it can't happen in six months, just based on watching all the projects that go on. This has been very wishy-washy from planning on where you are in the exact planning process, and you haven't even been to the tack yet. And it does not go before PNC unless we make it go, it does not have to. So this is our one-shot people. And we're just sitting around the table very, very wishy-washy, saying things that we don't have a way to enforce, and we don't have a well-thought-out plan if this doesn't happen.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I will make a comment that, uh, it is my understanding of member Ben Sina's, is that if they do not start the building, have a permit and start the buildings in six months, they will be removed. That is the process. They have to be removed, and that's, that's the same process that we, we don't have to go through any other process. Cliff, you may, uh, weigh in if you want, but that is my understanding. If that is our condition is not met, then they are moved and they've, they're given a timeline to get them off the plant or off the lot.
I think that's, thank you, Mayor. I, I take it that's true. I, I, again, I'd have to defer to Marty on the permit, if, if he has applied for a permit, whether or not that's considered starting construction. Um, I, you know, the other issue here is if he meets that six months, that condition is satisfied and then the variance is permanent. So it's not getting removed. If, if it's a six months, he needs to get a permit, then at six, if he gets the permit within the six months, and let's say it expires, it, the variance is granted, the variance is there. It stays.
Hmm, but my motion-
Shouldn't-
Yeah, six months to start the building. Start construction.
I, I, well, there's two different things. You can apply for a permit. I don't have anyone from the, from the permit approval, but you can apply for a permit and you may be working on it for six, you can keep extending it out, but that doesn't mean you've started construction. You may be able to do some grading, but that doesn't mean it's construction. The other thing is a variance in Arizona runs with the land. So if you've met the condition, that variance runs with the land. So if, if he starts the permit and then it doesn't happen, I'd say there's a very good argument that the variance stays. He's allowed to have it there without the primary use. So we, you know, we do need to be very specific. Do we mean permit? Do we mean substantial start of construction, grading, uh, and then that just relates to the condition. So he can meet the condition, and then the variance stays indefinitely. It's a variance. Not to mention, we are in a quandary, because the applicant has admitted that it is self-imposed, which means the Arizona law does not allow for this variance.
I just want to clarify, to like, start construction of the building requires an approved building permit. Can I just clarify? You said, I wrote down six months to complete as well, right?
I heard him say he was hoping to get it built within six months.
All right, I just wanted to clarify that on the record.
But as I, our attorney just said, if it doesn't happen and something falls through, and that's, we could have containers on that property forever.
Exactly, and that's what I wanted to, to, to clarify with this, because we'll, we'll be on that point right now.
Standing is, how can they be left if there's no main dwelling? Doesn't build a building there, how can he leave any storage there without a main building?
Because then there'd be a variance that allows for accessory use without a primary building. And it's a variance that runs with the land, so that lot could always be used for accessory storage without a primary building built, as long as he's satisfied the condition. If he initially satisfies the condition, the variance is there for time eternity until it's removed from, by the council.
So Councilmember Ben Sina, the whole point of the ordinance is that we do not want empty lots being used to store Conex containers, right? And by granting this, we're granting their ability to have storage containers with no main building.
Think I heard something right. If he gets through the process, he gets his permit to build, he can put the buildings on immediately, right? The, the storage containers on there, and we go through the same process. He hasn't had to build anything.
See, if he builds the main building, then the accessory buildings can be there.
Yes, but didn't I hear you that if he goes through and gets his permit, we, so he takes them off, and then in, in, in three weeks, you give him a permit for his building?
He still has to have the main building built, but he's, like he said, some of his storage there has construction materials. So some of it would be there during the construction.
So, so if I change the motion, he must have the building completed within nine months?
You can, that can be a stipulation if you want, but your original one that you stated was that he get the building permit with-
He must start the building within six months.
And then if it's not, then they go-
They go away.
Can, can we try this, uh, that we make the stipulation, instead of having this timeline, that the stipulation says that there has to be a main building at a certain point. If there's no main building, everything has to go.
Well, he's, you know, he's made the commitment, he's an honest gentleman, so he says he's gonna build it, so I can agree to that.
Mr. Ben Sina, I am not questioning this man's integrity, but-
I, I can understand what you said.
That I don't know anybody who would guarantee in this day and age, with the price of building materials and with the unavailability of contractors, that they will have something built in six months.
But what I'm trying to say is, I can agree with you saying they can stay as long as there is a building built on that land. If he never builds a building, they have to go.
We are changing the value of that property, no matter who the owner is, right? And so, as our attorney just said, the variance goes with the property. And I am trying to head off where there is ever, ever a chance that we have storage containers where we live with no purpose other than storage.
So could I, can I change the motion?
Absolutely. We don't have a second yet.
You do have a second, you have-
Oh, we do have a second. Okay, we can, we can adjust the second.
Second, we would have to agree to the modification.
Okay. Please, please repeat the motion.
There's confusion here, though, because I think we need to clarify it again, because what Mo said earlier was three of the revisions or three of the variances hadn't been met, and then he seconded it. So can we just be clear that we all understand-
Yes, to meet all five.
What we're doing again, because, yeah, because if, and it's not just with, with this gentleman and his wife, it's, this is changing the future, because this is, if this happens now, it's gonna happen again, it's gonna happen again, it's gonna happen in your area, it's gonna happen in ours, it's gonna happen all over Florence. So I just want to make it clear on what's happening here, because I'm confused, because in one sentence, he was saying he didn't meet them, and then the next one he seconded. So I just want to make sure that we're all clear on what we're actually doing, because there's been a lot of discussion on the side.
So, uh, Marcela, how many of the conditions has he met as of today?
So there's five of them. He doesn't meet the first three. The second, the fourth and the fifth, he is working to get his property rights and to have them by going through the permitting and design reprocess. And his other statement is he doesn't see that he is a detriment, a negative force on the surrounding area. So that, that's where he meets those, or that's where those two are met. But the other three, the first three, he does not, as it's not a special condition with the land, um, he causes himself, and this is something that's not special in circumstance. Like this has happened before.
Okay.
So I briefly speak again?
Please.
So typically, variances, uh, deal with the topography of the land, I think, as I mentioned earlier. So for example, if someone, you know, maybe there's a restriction on the num, the side, the amount of lot you can take with your building, but for some reason, there's a drainage, uh, pattern, or there's a river running through part of your lot, so you're gonna have to violate, in order to use that land, you're gonna have to violate the code restriction that prevents you from covering so much of the land or a certain part of the land. Well, that might be a situation that's not self-imposed. But here, it's not related to topography, it's not related to something that the applicant didn't, and again, I'm not trying to um, argue necessarily against the applicant, but I am trying to say what the law is, and the law is variance is not allowed if the applicant caused the condition. The applicant's testimony is that he moved these boxes there. Some of them have business use and some have construction use, but they were moved there, and, and I'm not trying to make a judgment on his reasons, but they were put there and our planning department is determined that they are not allowed there unless there is a primary building. And these are not the primary use. So the applicant is responsible for creating the condition, which on its face appears to be in violation of the Arizona law to allow for a variance. Um, so I, I can't tell you not to grant the variance, and I understand we're only talking about a motion. But we, there will be consequences, not only if their conditions are not extremely clear for this unusual situation, but the reality is, we even have an applicant that is saying he does not meet all of the conditions of our code to grant a variance. So we not only have it in the record, but you know, a town can appeal a board of adjustment decision, not just an applicant. So if it's an illegal variance, there can be a request for someone to appeal, for the town to appeal that decision, to have it overturned potentially or reviewed by the Superior Court. So that's why we're being so specific in what these conditions mean, because this record then is the ba- the basis for the court to make a review if necessary, and it's not just an applicant that can appeal that decision. So I, I'm not trying to tell you how to vote, I'm just trying to give you the outside parameters.
Thank you, sir. All right, do we want to take another shot at this, member Ben Sina, as far as what uh, the conditions, uh, just so we're all square again, and, and like, uh, councilmember Bucelato said, or member Bucelato said, just, let's just make sure we're all on the same page here, because we have had a lot of discussion.
Councilman Maldonado have to rescind his second?
Yeah, I rescind my second.
Okay. Somebody else want to make a motion?
Oh, just, you, you were, you rescinded.
Does anybody else want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we deny the appeal BOA dash twenty-five dash O two on the grounds that the, does not met the five conditions which are required.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion, uh, with this motion? All right, very good. With this, I'd like a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Adam?
Aye.
Councilmember Bedford?
Aye.
Councilmember Ben Sina? Councilmember Bucelato?
Aye.
Councilmember Neil?
Inside, yes.
I'm going to come back to Councilmember Neil. Councilmember Maldonado?
Nay.
Councilmember Neil?
See his image moving.
How would you vote, Mayor?
No.
We have a tie vote, three-three, motion fails.
All right. Thank you all very much. With that, then, we, uh, the applicant will be advised of next steps by, by the team members. And so with this, item number eight would be to adjourn from the Board of Adjustments. I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
We'll make a motion to adjourn on this meeting.
The Board of Adjustments.
Board of Adjust-
Okay.
Second.
We got a motion, we got a motion in a second, all in favor?
No, 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 Cliff and Lisa are trying to say something, you guys.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. Okay, so I'm interrupting again. Because it's a board of adjustment decision. The motion was in the negative, and it resulted in a tie-tie. The other, the other interesting thing is one of our members dropped off. Um, so typically, for a board of adjustment decision, for there to be a decision that has been made, uh, it's, it requires at least four, requires a quorum. Um, since the motion failed, there's really been no action. Um, and I, to be honest with you, is, is Councilmember Neil coming back? I-
Lisa, can you try to get a hold of him?
Yeah, I'm just worried because he was here for the hearing, and, and we don't have his vote, and we started the whole hearing with him, and if he's not voting, you know, the applicant may say they didn't get their variance. So they may say, well, I had a board of adjustment person, a, a judge that left, and they didn't, I didn't hear their vote. So that's what I'm concerned about, is that we, we kind of need that, that other judge to vote.
And when, when Kathy made the motion, she said to deny, right? I just wanted to clarify.
That's correct. So now there could be a motion to approve, but we don't have our other judge that's heard the case. So it's kind of like we can't, we can't finish the case without our other judge. We need to hear from the other judge.
Are we trying to get a hold of member Neil?
We did contact member Neil, um, it's going straight to mail, did send a message. Um, town attorney Matice, is there a way to postpone this to our regular meeting?
Yeah, I mean, that's, the only thing I can think of is we've had the hearing, the open part of the hearing, we've closed it, you've had the discussion. Councilmember Neil's been part of that entire matter. Sort of make a final decision on the vote. I would say this vote is even still pending. So the matter would need to be continued until we can get a vote from that council member. The other thing I would remind everyone, including the applicant, is there are no ex parte discussions allowed with a board of adjustment. So that means it can't be something that, uh, the staff or board members or the applicant can, can reach out to that judge essentially, outside of this proceeding, to ask them about the decision or to influence their decision. So I would say this matter should be continued until Councilmember Neil can register with his vote based on this record for us to be able to wrap this up, whether it was denied or not. I'm sorry, it's-
No, thank you, thank you for that. No, 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 this is an unusual circumstance all day long, so I appreciate the guidance, uh, that you've given us. So with that, uh, so, and I just do have some, because this is unusual, is that, uh, at, for him to register his vote, is that in, is that- Is that in, is that at the next, at a next meeting or is that uh, he's able to register that with the clerk?
We we would have to go into session and continue this session to for it to be on the record. And I would suggest we would continue this to a specific date in time for the applicant. Otherwise, we'll have to readverti- I we just need to do it for a certain date and time to be reconvened. Basically, we're going to temporarily dismiss and continue the hearing to be reconvened on a certain date and time.
That since since the public hearing has already been held and closed, we can continue the item to the Mr. Neil's calling. Hold just one moment. Hello, Councilmember Neil, you're on speakerphone.
On my battery while I was watching it on Zoom and I couldn't see it.
Okay, um, would you like me to take Councilmember Neil's vote at this time?
Please do. Do we need to, do we need to make sure to repeat the motion and the second, what we're voting on?
Yes, I think that would be a good idea to repeat because it's a negative motion in the negative. So then it it changes when someone says yes or no on what they normally think.
Member Neil, there is a motion on the floor to deny the application based on them not meeting the criteria. The vote stands three noes to three yeses. A yes vote would mean that the application is denied. A no vote would mean that the application is not denied. How is your vote? Thank you, sir. We do have four votes in the affirmative to deny the motion.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. And thank you very much, Member Neil, for calling back in with that. Uh, I guess it's always uh, technical difficulties do show up when we don't need them. So very good. Thank you so much, uh, everyone. So uh, then now moving forward is that item eight is to adjourn from the Board of Adjustments. I have a motion, please.
I motion to go ahead, Nicole.
I make a motion that we adjourn from the Board of Adjustments.
Do you have a motion?
A second.
We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Not seeing any. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, very good. Item nine is a is adjournment from the meeting from the uh, the special meeting.
Make a motion, we adjourn from our special meeting.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you so much, all.